So being that it is the hour of 6:00 p.m. on Monday, May 18th, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Series. By way of notice to the public, this meeting is held in accordance with the Executive Order N 2920 issued by the California Governor Gavin Newsom on March 17, 2020, the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section 54950 at SEC, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. This meeting is not physically open to the public. All members of the public may participate and comment via the application Zoom. Meeting information, website, https://zoom.us/join. Remote public comment is also available for the Planning Commission meeting by emailing anne.mccomery@ci.series.ca.us by 6:00 p.m. date of the meeting or via phone application Zoom. So I've called the meeting to order. At this time, I'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Tom. At this time, will the clerk please call the rule?
Yes, please note that Commissioner Johnson is excused this evening. So we have Commissioner Del Nero.
Present.
Commissioner Katchel.
Here.
Commissioner Silveira.
Here.
And Chairperson Smith.
Here, thank you. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? All right, being none, we'll move on to Citizen Communications. Public comments will now be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand to request to speak using the hand icon located at the bottom right of your screen. If you are participating by phone, please press the number nine on your phone. Names will be called and the order of the requests are received, and your microphone will be unmuted when it's time for you to speak. The clerk, are there any comments on Zoom?
No, I don't have any at this time.
All right, do you have any? Have you received any public comments through the email?
No, I have not.
All right. At this time, we'll move on to consent. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, we'll move on and ask the clerk to please read the consent items, noting that item 2B should be read separately and moved on separately.
All right. Item 1, Clerk's Report of Posting. The agenda for the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of May 18, 2020, was posted on May 13, 2020. Item 2A, Approval of Minutes from the Planning Commission Meeting of March 2, 2020, and all commissioners were present. Item 2B, Approval of Minutes from the March 16, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting, and Chair Smith was absent that evening. Item 2C, Approval of Minutes from the Planning Commission Meeting of April 6, 2020, and all commissioners were present that evening. Item 3A, General Correspondence Informational Only. Series Downtown Revitalization Area Fiscal Year 2019-20 Quarterly Report for the Third Quarter.
Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion to approve all consent items with the exception of item 2B.
Also move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Katchel. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Katchel, a second by Commissioner Silveira. Will the clerk please call a rule?
Yes, Commissioner Katchel.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveira.
Aye.
Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
And Chairperson Smith.
Aye, thank you.
Motion passes 4-0 with one absent.
Thank you. And now I will take a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of March 16, which is item 2B.
We'll move that as well.
I have a motion by Commissioner Katchel. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Del Nero, thank you. I have a motion, a second. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Yes, Commissioner Katchel.
Aye.
Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveira.
Aye.
And Chairperson Smith is abstaining, so motion passes 3... I'm sorry, 2-0 with one absent and one abstention.
Thank you. No items were removed from the consent items, so I will now adjourn the Planning Commission meeting and open the Series Downtown Revitalization Area Board. Will the clerk please call the rule again?
Yes. Please note that Board Member Johnson is excused this evening. So we have Board Member Del Nero.
Present.
Board Member Katchel.
Here.
Board Member Silveira.
Here.
And Chairperson Smith.
Here, thank you. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to New Business. Item 4, Series Downtown Revitalization Area Board Annual Report. Mr. Hallam.
Thank you. And Chair and members of the Commission. Tom, could you put Exhibit A up? I'll be referring to A and to D.
Okay, hold on just a second. No, it's the wrong one. Sorry, trying to find the right one here. Should it be on the screen, Steve?
That's Exhibit A from the prior item. The consent item. By the way, while you're on there, leave that there for a second, can you?
Yep.
I direct the board members. This was the summary of the third quarter financial statement that was a consent item. What's kind of interesting about it, and I wanted to point out, the landscape maintenance contract services, it will come into play in the annual report, but you'll notice it has been averaging about $409 per quarter. We actually had a credit coming from Howard Training Center, so for three quarters, it was $642. What is interesting about that is that contract has lapsed or will lapse on June 30, and Public Works bid out the downtown CRDA district as one bid, and it has come back as an annual maintenance contract of $30,000. So it's going to be a very, very significant increase. We knew that was coming, but there's quite an adjustment in this year's... next year's proposed budget to accommodate 20,000 of that $30,000 annual expense for landscape maintenance. I just wanted to point that out. Go ahead, Tom. Now you can go to the next staff report in Exhibit A. Perfect, thank you, right there. The Downtown Revitalization Area was established in 1989 by the Series City Council. Today, it consists of 46 businesses, and those businesses are assessed. A quarterly fee that they pay as part of their sales tax receipts to the city is their business license payment, and it is intended to promote activities or to fund activities that promote the economic vitality of downtown. The district primarily includes the City Hall and Police Complex and Memorial Park, includes businesses along Third, Fourth, Fifth Street, some on Sixth Street on the west side down south of Lawrence, bordered on 99 on the southwest border, and then one lot deep north of Magnolia that picks up a few businesses along the north side of Magnolia. Annually, the City Council is bound by the Business Improvement District Code of the state law to adopt an annual report. That annual report identifies the projects or activities that will take place in the upcoming fiscal year, provides the funding to support those activities, and it also acknowledges that the council establish a assessment lien for next fiscal year to recover costs or to generate income to fund those activities. Now, could you go to Exhibit D, Tom? The Commission or the Board is asked to take a look at the proposed budget that we will take to the City Council in the first council meeting in June. We identify the activities that we're proposing to do, and we will ask the Board to make a recommendation to the council for approval of this annual report. Exhibit D shows the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020-21, and we will be predicting or projecting revenues in the amount of $13,800 from the assessments for the new fiscal year, and the proposed department expenditures exceeds that by about $24,000 and is recommended at $38,150. Electricity and gas, we pay for all the streetlights in the CDRA district. We have a minor amount for postage and advertising for the annual report and advertised public hearing to assess the lien on the properties. And this year, you'll notice Contract Services is $20,000. Go to the next page, Tom. I want to see what it was in this fiscal year.
Eighteen.
Contract Services is 8255, but that included some funding that covered, carried the security enhancements. Excuse me. You know, my grandson, I hooked up his Amazon Kids Alexa so he can call me. So he calls me at the most inopportune times using Alexa. Okay, go back to D. The Contract Services consists of $10,000 or $20,000 for the... I'm sorry. $10,000 for the Contract Services and Landscape Assistance, $10,000 for banner replacement and upgrades, and Contract Services to install the lighting downtown during the holiday season and the lighted holiday spray that's over the series sign. But again, that Contract Services is going up quite a bit this year. We budgeted for landscaping at the 18255 of 1920 fiscal year, but we didn't spend near that much amount of the landscape services. We fund a minor amount of office supplies and duplicating supplies, and then the bulk of that reserve that's taken out of the budget carryover or the budget reserves of $24,000 to fund this year's proposed department expenditures are three programs and activities that we first identified in 2015 in response to input from downtown businesses. This included $1,000 that is just a placeholder for a wayfinding sign program, $10,000 that we set aside two years ago to fund some type of downtown incentive program that we have not had a desire or need to develop yet, and then $5,000 for the design assistance matching grant for a facade renovation program. We've continued to fund that, although nobody has taken advantage of that facade renovation assistance program, primarily because of the prevailing wage restrictions. But this year, I am anticipating that as we begin to look at possible programs to assist businesses as they come out of the COVID-19 pandemic, we might be looking and might be glad we have that program in that this year to identify some uses of that funding. So again, as you go down below, the total proposed budget is $38,150. Well, had to the $13,800 revenue, and so the budget deficit for this upcoming fiscal year will be $24,350. At the beginning of last fiscal year, we had a budget reserve of $84,000. Based on the revenues and expenditures from this current year, we are anticipating closing out next month at $85,908. So there's sufficient revenue to carry the $24,350 if we were to spend every dollar in next year's proposed budget and still leave an unencumbered fund reserve balance of $61,558 at the end of next fiscal year. Tom, you want to go to the resolution? Are there any questions on that proposed budget, by the way, while we're there?
Well, let me ask the Commissioners or the members of the Board if they have any questions. If they don't, I do.
No, go ahead.
No, I don't have it.
So Brett, do you have any?
No, I don't.
Okay, so I'm not sure I understand. I thought you started this by saying that we will be participating in a Public Works contract for landscape maintenance, and it will be $30,000. Steve?
That is what I said, yes, that is correct. Next fiscal year's landscape contract is... will be budgeted at $30,000 out of the city's budget.
Oh, in the city's budget?
Yes. $15,000 of that 30 is attributed to the Series Downtown Redevelopment Agency Fund and is 15 of that 20,000 shown on this line right there under Contract Services.
Okay, the 20,000.
So $15,000 is our half, our share, our half of the city's obligation for 12 months of landscape maintenance. $5,000 is to fund the promotional banner rotations and the seasonal lighting program.
I see, okay, I misunderstood. Okay, let me ask you and I guess the other Commissioners a question. So we've been maintaining this $1,000, $10,000, and $5,000 funding for wayfinding incentives and facade renovation for quite some time and haven't had any takers. And it's not that I don't think there'll be use for it, but I'm just wondering if... I don't... I guess I feel like, you know, should we not budget it this year? And if, when the program gets developed that the city is planning on making, that when we come back and ask for funding, a budget amendment is done of this. I get concerned, and I'm concerned that the revenues are probably a little high. My expectation is that we'll see those revenues lessen that as a result of businesses not being able to function or maybe even some of them closing as a result of this. So I don't know, I'm just putting that out there. It's just an idea for discussion.
Could I comment on that, Chair?
Please.
You know, I concur with that, particularly that $5,000, that wayfinding sign of $1,000. We've always plugged that in as a placeholder, knowing that if one year we decide to pull the trigger on that program, it's probably going to be closer to 20,000, 25,000, and we would come back and request a mid-year budget adjustment. And we've kind of left that in there as a placeholder so we can just look at a budget adjustment throughout the fiscal year instead of an entirely new approval of a revised budget. The facade renovation, you know, frankly, we could take that out. And if someone did want to do a facade renovation, we'd come back and request some funding. If we were to do that, I'd suggest not dropping it under 1,500, in the YAC 1,500. I continue to work on a prominent downtown business owner who runs a furniture store, and I'm like that close to pulling, him pulling the trigger on us doing a joint project to do a facade renovation of the former bank building at the corner of Fourth and Lawrence. Our match is a $3,000 facade renovation grant, 1,500 by the CDRA and 1,500 by the property owner. So while I see no others on the horizon or even an interest, if we were going to reduce that, I'd say let's leave it at 1,500, and that gives us a chance if he's... if he becomes warm and fuzzy about it, suddenly I can jump on that and we can get to the Board an approval to match a facade grant to get that building designed.
Well, I can appreciate that, and thank you for sharing that. My concern is that we currently are using carryover for almost $25,000 of this budget, and it could very well be that it ends up being $35,000 if the proposed expenditures are all spent. And so I just want to be mindful of the predicament we're in and not have on our approved budget things that aren't going to happen. Those are my comments. I'd be interested in the rest of the Commission's or the Board's feelings, and, you know, I'm not married to that idea. I'm just bringing it up for discussion.
Yeah, Chair, if I could, one of the things that we need to remind ourselves that Walmart seems to be inching forward towards hopefully getting their project started and underway. One of the conditions of approval talks about a $75,000 commitment to be placed for the downtown to improve conditions and shopping opportunities, et cetera. So while I can't give a date into when Walmart would actually make that contribution to us, it's on the horizon.
Well, I appreciate that. That's also helpful.
Yeah.
Will that be in the minute?
Will now.
Well, you know, this I moves forward to the council, and I appreciate them knowing that we're having thoughtful deliberation in a time of real fiscal uncertainty and knowing that there's the potential for a contribution to the downtown that will assist and/or support this budget. I'm willing to move forward with it. I just want to make sure that it's recognized that we are concerned about future revenues, and I don't want to be, you know, appropriating money that could put us in either a further future crisis.
Yep, staff understands that. We'll make sure it's reflected in the minutes.
Yeah. And can I ask one more question? So any facade program or downtown incentive program, does it get any approval from either the Planning Commission or the council before the appropriation is awarded?
Yes, both the design grant of $3,000 has to come before the Board. The Board can approve that authorization. The program is written where the Board just gives their consent to move ahead with the design. If they move ahead with an actual facade renovation and go for a $10,000 match, in that case, they go to the Board for design approval and City Council for authorization of that funding.
Okay, well, that's good. All right. Well, and if, you know, as you continue to work with the local businesses, as you are able to keep us informed or have Tom keep us, so we know that things are continuing to progress, that'd be great. We appreciate it.
You bet. Tom, can you go back one to Exhibit C? Oh, it's going to go... Keep going. By the way, those are the assessment liens.
Right.
Keep going. Okay, that is the annual report itself. It identifies the Board, the boundaries, the improvements and activities to be carried out, the estimate of the cost for this next fiscal year. Fact that the proposal under method and base of levying assessment is that the assessment will replicate the parking and business improvement district as outlined in Exhibit C, which is the same as currently this year. There has not been a change in the assessment rate since 1989. That would take a vote of the business owners to make any change to that increase or decrease. And with that, I would conclude my staff report. There's an attached resolution to the staff report that we'd ask the Commission or the Board members, I'm sorry, to recommend and then approve that action to pass on to the council at their first meeting in June.
All right, let me make sure I got the right one here, because there's two, right?
One resolution with that exhibit that's on the screen now.
No, I know, but there's two staff reports, and I don't want to get it mixed up. All right, so this is a Planning Commission Resolution 2020-01. Should it be a Revitalization Area Board Resolution?
Yes, it should. Go up one, Tom, to the resolution.
It is.
There it is.
2020.
It's the C draft. I think it's okay.
Now, I'm looking at the staff report, and it's the recommended action. Review the annual report and adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2021-01. So it's just a typo.
Whoops, yes, that's a typo. The resolution itself has the correct title and...
Yeah, it does.
Yep.
All right, well, since we got through all that, unless there's any further questions or comments from the Board, I will ask for a motion. Anyone?
Yeah, I'll make a motion if I can find out where it is to read.
What I was thinking, too.
Oh, let's try this. Resolution, make a motion except the annual report of the Series Downtown Revitalization Area Board for the 2021 fiscal year. I recommend the City Council approve the report and set a public hearing. Consider levy of the proposed assessment.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Board Member Silveira.
Aye.
Board Member Del Nero.
Aye.
Board Member Katchel.
Aye.
And Chairperson Smith.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0 with one absent.
Thank you so much, Anne, and thank you, Mr. Hallam. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, I will close the Revitalization Area Board and will reconvene as the Planning Commission. Moving on to public hearings, there are none. Move to New Business. Item 5, Lot Line Adjustment, 20-01 Resolution. PC 20-17, approving a lot line adjustment for NGB Construction. Solid two properties located at 1209 Marquee Lane and 1239 Marquee Lane into one parcel. Mr. Michaels.
Thank you very much, Chair. So in August of 2018, you may recall that this project was... the applicant NGB Construction had come to the Commission for site plan approval entitlement, where the applicant was proposing to construct a 4,000-square-foot office building and also a workshop building at 1950 Morgan Road. The applicant was planning to manufacture prefabricated walls for residential and commercial buildings at that particular property. Well, prior to constructing the project, the applicant sold the 1950 Morgan Road property to the Kingspan Insulated Panels Company located to the south at 2,000 Morgan Road so that the Kingspan Company could go ahead and develop that property as part of their overall manufacturing operation. So upon sale of that Morgan Road property, the applicant then bought the two properties that are before you tonight, 1209 Marquee Lane and 1239 Marquee Lane. And both of these sites are in the Morgan Road Industrial Park. The development of the properties within the park can be handled at staff level through what you would call the administrative permit. And so the applicant submitted that permit application in October 2019, essentially to construct the same product that was approved there on the Morgan Road property. Part of the condition on that permit was that they go ahead and do a lot-line merger, thereby allowing the parcels to consolidate into one parcel, and then they could go ahead and then construct the product. And so everything that you see before you complies with the development standards of the master plan and the other applicable codes of the municipal code.
That's it? Okay, well, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the Commission? Are there any members of the public? Are there any members of the public who have joined us either by Zoom or email that'd like to comment?
I have none at this time, Chair.
Thank you. Do you see any hands waving?
No, I don't.
Isn't that what happens, hands waved? All right, seeing none, I will then bring it back to the commission and ask for a motion.
Well, I'll try the motion here. Adopt resolution PC twenty seventeen, approving a lot line adjustment. Do I need any more than that?
I don't think so.
No, that should be sufficient, Chair.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from, thank you, I have a motion in a second. Ann, did you get the second? Who it was from?
Yes, Mr. Katchel.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Katchel.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveira.
Aye.
And chairperson Smith.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item six, lot line adjustment twenty dash oh two, resolution number PC twenty dash eighteen, approving a lot line adjustment for Paul Power to consolidate two properties, APN zero three nine zero three two zero five and APN zero three nine zero three two zero one six into one parcel located at thirteen oh five Hernan Road. Staff report.
All right, thank you, Chair. So in October twenty nineteen, the city approved a conditional use permit to construct a gas station for the existing seven eleven convenience store located at thirteen oh five Hernan Road. With that project, there was going to be a six hundred square foot addition to that convenience store. And then there was going to be a fueling station of eight fuel pumps total with a nineteen hundred square foot canopy. Again, with involving two properties, the condition of approval was imposed and then a tournament requiring the project to obtain approval of lot line adjustment or to merge the two parcels involved in the construction of the project and merge them into one lot. And that would need to be done prior to issuance of the building permit. And so here, the applicant is, proposed the consolidation of the two properties and the merger does comply with the requirements, the development standards listed in the applicable series municipal codes section. That was it.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there anyone on the commission that has any questions or comments?
Actually, I do have a question. I wasn't here for this originally, obviously. And I know we're here to talk about the lot line approval. Just, I have a question about the building and adding six hundred and three square foot addition. In your previous conversations, did they plan on doing some renovations that make it look like all one building or any upgrades or anything like that?
Yes, they are. That's part of the project that when they went through the use permit that they were going to re, with the addition, they were going to improve the whole look of the building.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments from the commission?
No.
No.
Okay, seeing none. Ann, are there any email comments or questions?
I have none at this time, Chair.
Okay, is there anyone who's joined us by Zoom, I guess, raising their hand?
No one's raising their hand at this time.
Thank you. Then with that, I'll bring it back to the commission and ask for a motion.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number PC twenty eighteen, approving a lot line adjustment for Paul Power Tower to consolidate two properties into one located on the parcel thirteen oh five Hernan Road.
Thank you so much. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, I'll, go ahead. That's fine.
I need a second.
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. All right, I have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Silveira.
Aye.
Commissioner Katchel.
Aye.
Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
And chairperson Smith.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to item seven, capital improvement program fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty one, project priority list. Mr. Padilla.
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith and Planning Commissioners. So the capital improvement program is a capital planning and management program to assist in identifying projects and infrastructure improvements. And the intent of this effort is to ensure that appropriate projects are planned, funded and developed. The city council last updated the CIP project list in June of twenty nineteen and included new projects as part of the adoption of the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget, which was after the planning commission found that the list wasn't consistent with the general plan and made that recommendation. So I'll jump into the project list. Tom, I don't know if you can put that on the screen or if everybody can, who wants to follow along can bring that up. That was in the packet. So our first project on the list is resurfacing the tennis courts at Roding Heights, repairing some sidewalks at Don Pedro Park, audio visual system upgrades at the city council chambers. Project four on the list is, it's a CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, federal funding to install sidewalks in the Moral Village subdivision, which is between Garrison and Whitmore and Moffett and Rose Avenue. We're doing several streets in that area and that'll be a phased project over four or five years. We are also overlaying Blaker Road from Hackett to Whitmore. We just finished a couple of weeks ago overlaying Blaker from Hackett to Service. So now we're doing the rest of Blaker to Whitmore and also Central Avenue from Service to the roundabout at Pine, Pine Street. We also are doing our pavement preservation project on various streets citywide or throughout the city and some flashing deacons at a couple of schools, to be determined the exact schools. Wastewater projects that we have on the list are wastewater treatment plant rehab and replacing equipment, facility improvements at the Corp Yard, West Point sewer lift station improvements, rehabbing or overlaying all the roads at the wastewater treatment plant, replacing a lid at the service road sewer lift station and abandoning a school farm at the treatment plant, an old building there, at the old treatment plant site. For our water projects, we have our annual wellhead treatment project, Corp Yard facility improvements, annual water conservation system improvements, repairing some facilities at well twenty eight, annual water system rehab twenty twenty one, wellhead treatment, Blaker pumping station improvements. And then our biggest project there is our River Bluff, three million gallon tank construction. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Okay, I see or hear no questions or comments from the commission. Ann, are there any, have you received any emails or is there anyone on Zoom that'd like to comment in the bottom?
I have none at this time, Chair.
Thank you so much. All right, if there are no questions or comments, I'll bring it back to the commission for a motion.
I'll make a motion we adopt draft resolution PC twenty dash nineteen. Is that where we're going off right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveira.
Aye.
Commissioner Katchel.
Aye.
And chairperson Smith.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
Thank you so much. Moving on to public meetings, there are none, no unfinished business, no matters initiated by the planning commission and staff. That brings us to reports. Is there anyone on the commission that has anything to report?
Nope. Nope, I'm fine.
Chairperson, I have something to report. I miss you guys. That's my big report. City attorney, I think I saw, my screen's only letting me see four people at a time, but I think I saw Nubia there.
I am here. It is nice to see you all, even if it's via Zoom.
Nice to see you too. I got to swipe my screen to see you, but now I see you. All right. Let's see, is there anyone on city staff that has anything to report? Anybody, like someone anonymous, anyone?
No, I think I'm, I think I'm good, Chairperson Smith. Thanks for asking. I don't know if any other staff has anything to report.
Oh, I'll add something. So on our Whitmore Avenue project tomorrow, we're going to have flaggers between Moore Road and Lunar, that stretch between Mitchell and East Gate. So it'll be closed and then, you know, they'll let one side go, one direction of traffic flow through and then the other. So if you can, avoid that area between seven and five o'clock tomorrow, actually tomorrow and the rest of the week. It'll be four days worth of that. And we appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Okay, unless there's anything else, and thank you, Tom. I'm a little shocked, just surprised and dismayed that you didn't have anything to report. But I guess, you know, it's just not the same here, is it?
I wanted to surprise you.
Yeah. All right, you guys, well, good meeting. Thank you so much for being so patient on the Zoom. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which will be held on Monday, June first.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye, everyone.